Are you ready, Ms. Connie?
Yeah.
All right, guys, we'll call this meeting to order. Could everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every being equal.
All right, you get to be seated. All right, roll call, Ms. Connie.
This is for the planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, yes, ma'am.
Mayor Frank.
Here.
Board member King.
Here.
Board member Florence.
Here.
Board member Fleming. Board member Coon.
Here.
Town attorney.
Here.
Town clerk, here.
Item number one is addition, deletion, changes approval of agenda. Do we have any changes, Connie?
No.
No? All right, so does need a motion to approve?
Yes.
You do? No?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Good, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Item number two, approval of minutes. Approval minutes from September 18, 2023. I've done a little bit of research.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from September 2023.
Second.
All in favor of approving minutes from September 18, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, item number three is public participation.
I have one request from Ms. Jackie Sulek.
Thank you, good deal. Ms. Connie, while she's speaking, can you hand me a pen, please? I forgot to get one a while ago.
Right out of that cup on the counter.
Yeah.
On the counter, right there.
Remember, it's three minutes, so I'll start the timer. Please.
One, two, three, go. Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. My name is Jackie Sulek, and I live at 209 Southwest Paisley. Last week, I sent you an extensive letter on my concerns about the preliminary approval of Phase 1. I think there are a lot of unanswered questions, and I think this is a great forum to discuss them, and therefore, I hope to answer some of them. So, number one question is, is Phase 1 standalone? If it is approved, will it go forward even if Phase 2 and 3 do not? Next, why was this plat modified? And it was modified with some process and whatever, which I don't know. It's very professional, but anyway. Why was it modified? Because there was already a house built, a la 111. Okay? This is actually kind of the good thing, because it raised some issues. What about the water? Well, there were pathogens found in the well that was drilled that could only be solved by extensive overloading with chlorine, and the water was deemed unsafe to drink. So, how safe is the water? We don't have a water source yet, determined as far as I know. A standard septic system was installed, because the house was on a small, small acreage. That will change. All of these homes will need advanced nitrogen-removing systems, per laws enforced in July of 2003. Now, right now, we've seen the first house built, and I see a lot of clearing going on in the area. Kind of makes you wonder. So, what I would like to say is that, at this point, I find any approval, even if it's an early approval, pre-approval, is not warranted. It's getting the heart of it, of course, ahead of the car. So, I think we need to answer a lot of questions, including the letter, before we go forward by giving people the confidence that this is the deal.
Thank you, Sulek.
All right, that's the only one we have, Ms. Connie?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we'll close public participation. We'll move to item number four, which is new business. Number one, resolution, SD 2023-01, a resolution considering a preliminary plat for Glen Farms subdivision.
Okay, a resolution of the planning and zoning board of the town of Fort White, Florida, providing a recommendation to the town council, providing a preliminary subdivision plat entitled Glen Farms. As in your packet is a plat, albeit not a normal-looking plat. As you know, at the time, this was submitted in phases. However, the phases that were submitted along with this, you'll see it scratched out at the top, went on subdivision, it said Phase 1, that's been scratched out, because there are no other phases at this time, due to the fact that the zoning and land use has not been done appropriately for the additional phases, therefore, other phases cannot be considered. To back up what Ms. Sulek said, yes, Lot 1 has to be removed from this plat, because it was already sold and is outside of the subdivision. So, this plat would get a, if the planning and zoning chooses to make a recommendation for approval, it would need to be with conditions. Those conditions being that the name gets changed to just Glen Farms subdivision, period, no Phase 1. Lot 1 gets removed from the plat. The numberings, it has to be changed on the lots, they're not consecutively numbered on the plat. The cul-de-sac, or the road, rather, at the end of the bottom, has cul-de-sac on the one end and a dead end on the other end. That would have to be made into a cul-de-sac as well, to allow for turnaround for emergency vehicles, or not dead-end streets allowed. So, that would need to be made into a cul-de-sac. As well as the plat would need to be drawn, and these changes done in the necessary format with the required by the Land Development Code. So, those are the items. And Mr. Lowell Garrett is here, he is our planner, that has reviewed this, et cetera. So, if you have any questions about this, Mr. Garrett is here to answer those questions.
I'm curious why we're voting on anything with an incomplete plat, though? I mean, if the changes haven't been implemented into the plat, why are we voting on it?
We were asked to submit the plat as is. We made these changes known, and we were asked to go ahead and submit the plat as is. And so, in order to try and move along, and Mr. Garrett made these changes on here to inform the planning council that you could approve it with these contingencies. Don't have to, but... Am I correct, Mr. Garrett?
Correct. So, this is going to go back to design, and they're actually going to make this permanent?
They'll have to make the changes, yes. They'll have to make the changes. Now, I do want to reiterate, and I've said this before, this approval of this preliminary plat is just that. The next step would be to approve construction plans. Construction plans would be in a great, a lot more detail than this. That's where you would see the easements, the curbing gutter, if it's in there, sidewalks, street lights, water, all those sorts of things. What this preliminary plat does is it, all we're saying is, okay, you've laid this out, it meets zoning, it meets land use, the lot sizes are acceptable, they're half-acre lot sizes, which is what it's zoned for, et cetera. Then, the next step would be the construction plans. So, by approving this preliminary plat tonight, this is not a green light to go ahead and begin construction on the house. Or even the subdivision for that.
I'm not sure how we can approve anything that's, we're going to change later. That's kind of the way I'm seeing it. I can't even make out half of what is on this paper. And from going from 109 to whatever this says now, we're kicking back and hunting every two months.
Where's that arrow there? It's in nowhere. It's in the middle of the field right now. So, what's, Ms. Connie, what's on this side of here? I'm confused here on this looking at this.
Nothing, and that's all filled.
What?
Over here. Well, my next question.
What side?
That's 18, trying to see what's, there's nothing over here, okay? This is the, this is the land that we're talking about has not been rezoned.
Yes. Everything outside the dark line surrounding this has not been zoned for our Step 2.
Well, I get, I mean, I do have another question, Mr. Lowell, maybe you can answer this. We, I know when we were talking about the construction of it, at one time, we were talking about wells.
Swains.
No, 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 wells.
Wells.
Water wells.
Yes.
And we have access to water, which is at the end of the subdivisions, that this butts up to. Why would we have approved it with wells, or with wells, when we could have tied it into our water system?
I can imagine that.
Can you? Okay. Yeah.
She's done a great job.
We learned a lot about subdivisions, I tell you. Yes, sir.
But what the issue is, is that those decisions are not made as part of this, okay? That would be considered at the time, the construction.
Strong, okay.
Okay? I do understand that there is a potential for that, okay? And that may be something that you may want to obviously look at, and talk with the developer about, because that's something that, obviously, everything along the order you want to do for a lot of reasons. But that's not, tonight, I think the point that Connie just made, Connie.
Yep.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right, go ahead.
Connie just made, is that, basically, this is a step back. Staff, city, the town attorney, Connie, myself, with the applicant's attorney, and we explained to them that they couldn't go any further, because the land use and the zoning is in place, and Connie just mentioned that. And that is a big reason for this, okay? So, well, what can we do? And the only thing that would be, the board would be able to consider, and I'm calling it the board, because the planning and zoning is not the county council. The only thing that the board can consider would be this preliminary plat. And the preliminary plat, according to your regulations, is not a development. Okay? So, you know, what it does is it gives the developer a, basically, a format, this is the way I'm going to be able to build this subdivision, with a lot configuration, street configuration. That's why we put it in here. We made certain that the items that were efficient, or that were needed, and these are code items, but these are not, you know, items that we just think should happen. These are issues based on the code, and we're limited to that. You mentioned it, you look at the plat, you get the plat in front of you.
Yes, sir.
Connie just mentioned the cul-de-sac. At the end of American Elm Drive. And the reason for that is that, as Connie mentioned, this development, if it's approved, has to stand alone. No future, no future consideration as a result of this. So, everything, if, when you look at this tonight, everything that you so desire to approve, deny, whatever, is based upon this plat, as a standalone plat. So, all of the information that was submitted with the original application, had all phasing in it, it had all the construction issues in it, it had all, the primary concerns that y'all have been talking about were really addressed within that construction agreement. We told, we told the developers, Terry, that you have to, we can't, we can't deal with the construction terms right now, the way they were submitted, because they were submitted with the entire property, 109 acres, the entire property, rather than the 49 acres that this is, which does have the appropriate land use and so on. Okay? With that said, okay, I wanted to reiterate some of this, because I think there was a few questions asked earlier, and that's the reason I wanted to answer those questions first. So, did I answer your question?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, I think you touched it, sir. That's okay, that's okay. Think, I think that, y'all have any questions before you step down? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead, keep going. No, you answered my question, though, yes, yes.
Well, I'm here to answer any of the questions you might have.
That, my understanding, talking to the engineer, that Lot 1, Ms. Connie?
Yes.
I guess it's Lot 1 that you, that was sold?
Mm-hmm.
From talking to the engineer, that there was a contract, and when they closed, that supposedly, that Lot 1 is supposed to become a part of the subdivision. I haven't seen it, but that's, well, that's what I've been told.
That would shake, they would have to join in.
Right. That's what they're saying, that they...
As applicants on the subdivision, so their name would also appear on the plat.
Right.
Okay, as part of the process. This has not been done to date, so...
We haven't received a plat with their name on it. That's why we're saying what we're saying.
Right, I got you.
It has to be eliminated.
Okay.
Because we do not have a revised plat with their name added on it.
Okay, got you. Okay.
I have to look for help, but, you know, if we go through the resolutions, and by the way, both resolutions are the same, one is for the planning and zoning board, and one is for the town.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Do you want to go through and talk about some of the changes that we, that we're talking about here?
We can.
And how it reads within the resolutions? Because... What you would be doing, if you approved this tonight, would be approving it based upon the following changes that would need to be made. And what you can do that by accepting this drawing, or by requiring another drawing, it really doesn't matter, because it's all codified here, okay? So, what you'd be talking about is, the name of the plat needs to be changed, and Connie mentioned this, Glen Farms, Phase 1, just Glen Farms. So, it's a standalone development. The master plan for Phase 1 development cannot be approved at this time, due to future land use and zoning not being consistent with the proposed master plan. We've already talked about that. The future land use and zoning will be required to be changed to a more appropriate density before the master plan, as provided, when that was provided, can be approved. Therefore, the preliminary plat, as submitted, is approved only as a standalone subdivision. Okay, the next condition is, it has come to the town's attention, we just talked to this, that, it's the town's attention, that Marshall identified as Lot 1 on the preliminary plat is no longer owned by the applicant. Lot 1 cannot be legally included within the preliminary plat, and is thereby removed from any approval by the town of the preliminary plat, Glen Farms. I would see, all standalone preliminary subdivision plats must be so designed.
It can't be an outside, they can't do.
Development, with no dependence on any other phase of development. So, if nothing else is developed, this has to stand alone, it has to stand on its own two feet. Everything in here has to, it has to be exactly what is needed for this for the nature, okay? All, therefore, all infrastructure and streets shall be so constructed as a complete development unit. All street ends should be constructed with cul-de-sac, that's, that's what, that's what land development can require. The street on the western end of Southeast Glen Street, I just said that, should be built with a cul-de-sac, as required by the Land Development Code. And then, item D, the preliminary plats should be renumbered after the exclusion of Lot 1, so we're talking about roughly 44 lots, 24 lots without exclusion. Any contingency, I just said that, so... So, any and all required improvements required by the Land Development Code are not in any way approved by this preliminary plat. That's clear.
Say that again now, what you...
Any and all required improvements, that'll be, you know, drainage, water, sewer, roads, the actual roads and...
So, the construction part, I've got.
Right. Any and all required improvements required by the Land Development Code are not in any way approved by this preliminary plat. So, it's clear. All required improvements shall be provided in a separate construction drawing that contains only the lots provided within this preliminary plat. So, what we're telling the applicant is we're telling them that they can do, they can do one of two things, okay? They can go ahead, and that's what we suggested to them, go ahead and apply for land use and rezoning for the balance of the property, and get it correct. Okay, and that comes before the, that comes before the town council, plans on the board and the town council for your review.
Could you speak up, please? Excuse me? Could you speak up, please?
Oh, you can't hear me? Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Poor people.
Well, I'm hearing. Yeah, they, they... Well, I can listen tonight, so, I'm talking wild. Anyway, so, that's why we're, we're saying that those development, construction fronts need to be redone, to conform to just this portion, okay? If they don't go the other way. So, that's it, pretty much, and that's, that's what we're suggesting to you, as, as language, if you're, if you're considering approving this, that this language be approved, and that will pretty much restrict and, and not create any misunderstandings about what is actually being approved. Any other questions?
Is it, let me ask you this last question, is it customary to approve a plat that's got changes on it, before the changes happen, and we, I mean...
Preliminary plats, yeah, you can change them at the meeting, you can often change at the, at the board meeting itself, and then the approvals places conditions upon those. And then, either the applicant will then come in and Connie will initial it or sign it as the official copy, which would be, you know, if you so desire, and those are the only things, that would be what you've got in your package, okay? With, with the changes. Yeah, it's, the preliminary plat, as I mentioned earlier, is not a development. It gives them, them being the applicant, the ability to go ahead, okay? Take the next step, so to speak. In that, if they go and put their good money in the ground, that it will, they will get any changes on that layout somewhere down the road. So, that's where, that's where it's important, in the fact that if you like the layout, you like the way the streets are laid out, you like the way the lots are laid out, then that's what will be constructed as part of the subdivision.
Basically, just a map, sort of like a layout.
I realize that, but it's public record now, now we have something that's kind of sketchy in public record, instead of something well-finished and defined. Any more questions? All right. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it, thank you, thank you for your time, yes, sir.
We got, I mean, you're the board right now. Mr. Garrett is deciding to leave.
Yes.
So, like I said, if there's any questions you have, or, you know, any concerns, whatever, now's the time to do it, because he has somewhere he has to do.
Did you see anything we're missing here, Lindsay? I mean, I mean...
We've gone over, Mr. Garrett was doing this, when I started practicing law, 25 years ago, he was already doing this. He probably forgotten more about land use law than anybody in this room will ever know. So, I have good faith in him and what he's told you guys. And I, when we've gone over it all, I'm just making the point, I believe he has to leave. And so, if you guys have any questions, or whatever, anything, make sure you guys ask him, because he, he's your guy. He is hired by you, this council, to look over this, and he has done extensive amount of work with your clerk. I've just sat on the sidelines and, and looked at her, but they have definitely spent a lot of time on it, and I have faith in their work.
Right.
And so, just wanted to make sure that you understood, he's got to go, so... Anything you need to ask him, I was going to...
Okay, Cap, you think we got him in control?
No, I don't have any questions for him.
Mr. Lowell, I, I got, I got one. Uh, you, you want, do you have something? Do you have some? Okay, I thought you said...
You have any questions?
I didn't have any questions.
I heard, I thought you was thinking, said something when you started.
Mr. Lowell, by, by, Mr. Lowell, by approving, if we did approve this, we, we're approving a map. From what I understand, of the layout, of the layout of the property, and we're agreeing that we, we can live with this, but that doesn't change all the conditions that we put on it. Am I correct?
That's correct. In other words, you can place reasonable conditions based upon the code.
Right.
Okay? And I think that's what staff has provided to you, so that if you decide to approve this, it's something that you can live with, and that if nothing else is developed, that will stand, that will stand alone, and you're not going to have, you know, not going to have dead-end streets, that type of thing.
Right. Okay.
You was unable to make out any of the notes and legends, any of that, Cap?
No.
That's my problem.
I really can't, I mean, to be honest with you. I mean, Mr. Garrett, when you went over this, did you see anything that's out, because I mean, we, you really can't read this, so, I mean, we don't know if there's something in there that we can't read, or, so I hate to approve something, a piece of paper that you can't read.
Okay, what, what is it that...
Well, like, all the notes up top. Those notes with a list of...
The sold properties.
Those are, those are, those are standard, that's standard language, basically, that the surveyor and the engineer have put in there, it's, that's all my limitations, please.
It says, there's one, there's, there's sole principals?
Properties.
Okay, I can't even read that. I can't even read that.
Well, there's also sole conditions at the top, it's standing there.
Yeah, these are, these are basically notes that are on there, by the, by the surveyor, who was responsible for, basically, signing and sealing this, this document. And then, the engineer probably has a couple of things in here, two references to soil, just telling you what, what, what the soils are. But if you'd like to go, I think it's worthwhile, since you've got that question, to go through those notes pretty quickly. What you've got on here is basically those notes. You've got the, the dimensions of the lots, you've got the location and dimensions of the streets. We've got the certificates of that this is a true survey, and you've got the legal scripturing. And then, you've got a smaller map in there that shows, that's a location map, that's basically, and it also shows the, the soil.
You saw it over here to the right? That little, little small...
As well as I numbered there, that's the... As well as I numbered there, that's.
Yeah.
This is my problem. Tell me to submit something we can read. It's cleaned up on my, on my vote minutes.
Now, does that duration longer? Lindsay, you got a copy of that? I mean, this is.
Yeah, but that was for the whole subdivision, I don't think it's on here, right? That was for the whole. Yeah, so that's irrelevant.
I don't think we'll be able to.
There's, uh, existing plans that show the whole development. They're kind of trying to disinformation which is.
Basically, I've gone through those notes. They're, they're, they're general notes. And, uh, there's really nothing there that would surprise me, but I'd like, I'd like just.
Well, I'd be surprised about that.
Yeah.
It's in there.
Well, we won't, is Ms. Connie looking for something?
Wait, sir. Wait, sir. That's what I'm going to do.
She's going to the old plat, trying to find the same notes on the old plat.
Yeah, but hell, I don't mean that. I mean, I don't mean that that's what this is.
That's what I'm saying. That's my problem. Yeah, that's irrelevant since this is now new. Yeah. If they give us two, where it's already cleared and done and legible, then that's something to vote on.
I can't read nothing on this lady. I know, I know I'm blind. I know I'm blind, but ain't that damn blind.
It's called vote. I mean, I'm not going to vote if they find something out in another direction that I don't have a week to prepare for.
No, it was sent to us electronically. That's why, and it was forwarded on to Mr. Garrett electronically. That's why I don't have a big, they didn't submit a big paper copy.
They did originally.
Right, not to change.
Is y'all bear with us real quick?
Am I allowed to ask a question?
We've done kind of closed the, you know, but I mean, I mean, yeah, I hate to say that, but I mean, we done brought back the table out. We, we opened it back up to the public again if we did that, so.
I'm sorry. We got a little out of order. Top, a little bit of order in there.
Yeah. Can you find it?
Can you break that onto the screen if you have it electronically?
I have no idea. It's out of Moscow. Connie, does this work?
Um, yes, it does. However, um, we would have to save it onto our laptop to go to the other computer.
Okay. Still working some votes out.
All right.
I say until this is where we can read it, get some more information into the table or.
Let me ask you this while he's looking for, well, I mean, I'm waiting for him to see whether we make a motion, but.
He's got it on his laptop when he blows it up to be able to read the.
Disoriented.
It's, it's.
Well, they can provide copies, I'm sure.
Yeah, um, Kelly, um, if you could have copy, paper copies, large paper copy.
If you have questions the council has, if they don't get it to us, we can give it to our client and get those answered out when we need to.
So is there a motion on the table? Does anybody want to make a motion? If anyone is going to die.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to get something more legible here to make any kind of vote on my part.
So we got a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we approve resolution SD twenty twenty-three zero zero one of resolution of the primary plat, bring it forward.
All right, is there a second? One twice. Is there a second? All right, motion dies. Okay. All right, let me, I'm the next. What's next? Scotty, we'll get them, we'll have to get a clear copy. Goodbye. All right. Guys, could you help, please? Guys, thank you.
I would suggest, you know, I would suggest if you could not approve it tonight, that you table it, that, excuse me, that you table it and require the, uh, require the engineer to go back and provide full scale.
Right.
Documents while he's at it. Take out the lot, make the gold, the gold back in, get a few alls and then.
Table it for revision.
So if you table it, we would automatically come up with a first slide.
Yeah. All right, so we'll table, so that was, yeah, so I did have a motion to table, I guess, resolution SD twenty twenty-three dash oh one with changes with whatever we did. You got those?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, motion to table resolution SD two zero two three zero zero one, uh, to come back with a full drawing that's legible with all the changes being made to it.
A second. On favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Good deal. All right, item number five is adjournment. Need a motion to adjourn. We'll open back up this town hall.
Make a motion to the county planning and zoning.
All favor of adjournment, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Good. All right. All right, guys, it is time we go ahead and open the town hall meeting. Uh, the date is October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at six, or actually six forty, six forty. All right, we already did, you need to, we have, Ms. Connie, roll call, please.
Yes. You have pressure?
Here.
Councilman King.
Here.
Councilwoman Fleming, Councilman Coon. Councilwoman Florence.
Here.
Town clerk here, town attorney.
Here. All right, item number one, additions, deletions, approval of attendance.
I have two additions.
It's Connie.
Don't worry about that. Um, item number, uh, under number four, if you would add, change the numbering and add one to the top, and that would be Eliza Chase from the FSU Department of Urban and Planning, has a brief statement about transportation planning meeting that she would like to be aware of. And then if you would add number five for consideration of a temporary use permit.
Yep, so add it number six?
No.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, number six.
Yes, number six, I'm sorry.
And it's, what is it again?
Temporary use permit, consideration of a temporary use permit.
Okay. Got it. All right, so just, we need a motion with changes, guys, which they've already gotten recorded on changes.
Make a motion to approve the changes on, uh, town council meeting.
Second. Yeah, all in favor of, um, all in favor of changes, say aye. All, all opposed, say nay. All right, good deal. All right, meeting, uh, item number two, meeting minutes, approval of minutes from September eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three. Does any motion approve?
Make a motion to approve minutes from town councilmen from September twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, all in favor of approving minutes twenty, uh, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, this time, item number three. Do we have any items, Connie?
Um, I have one.
Okay. All right, item number three is public participation.
Mr. Ford wants to speak about the subdivision.
Okay.
Oh, well, I'd say I really want to speak on what just happened. Uh, the documentation y'all couldn't read. It's obviously documentation that was out of the town, not by us. So there again, y'all have proven that y'all were inaccurate in parts, didn't have a good business.
You got the cover going? Yeah, I got it.
In a way it shouldn't have done. So therefore, I'm gonna save y'all the time. I'm gonna remove the subdivision of the town, not pursue the town with the subdivision. The mayor had maybe offered before that if I would DNX my property out of the town, that he would provide me funding back that I've spent annexing my property in and zoning my properties. And I would like to take him up on that offer this time.
I didn't say annex it out.
And then it's, I want to DNX the property out of the town.
I never agree. I never said that, but, you know, I ain't going to. It's your time, you speak. Go ahead.
So at this time, um, withdraw it, I subdivision claims for the town of Fort White. So you can remove that offer.
We got that on record? All right, yeah.
Well, and I will be pursuing the annexation out of town for white, be my process.
Good deal.
Very well.
Thank you.
By the way, this has been a three-year project. I've been lied to. I've had lies put on the minutes about me.
Are you, are you still, you want, still want to speak, please?
Yeah.
Could you imagine, please?
You know, I'm through being dragged through the mud by this council and this clerk. They continue to sell slappin'. So I want to be dealing with town of Fort White as far as this subdivision goes anywhere. And I'm here tonight as a proud citizen in town of Fort White, trying to do business with town of Fort White, not this county commission. Now, I am county commission, but this has nothing to do with my county commission. This has strictly to do with town of Fort White. And I'm through dealing with it. I've been called up, I've been cussed out, I've been told by the mayor I would never get nothing approved in Fort White, you know, so I'm through with it. If that's town of Fort White, it's going to conduct business. I'm not conducting business in the town of Fort White. I will annex my property out of Fort White.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Have a good day. All right, anybody else? We got anybody else? It's Connie?
No, that's it.
All right, good deal. All right, so that is time we'll close public participation. We'll move to number one, Eliza Chase. Eliza. Eliza, boy, I messed that up, didn't I? Okay, I'm sorry.
Looking Grant Moore, neighbor.
Yeah, thank you. That's the speaker, though.
Yeah, babe, you got, yeah.
Absolutely. So I just want to introduce myself. Um, thank you, um, Madam Clerk. Um, thank you, town councilman, for allowing me to speak here today. Uh, my name is Eliza Chase. I'm from the Florida State University Department of Urban and Regional Planning, specifically the Mark and Mary Ann Barnaby Lab. And what we do is what we're, what we're doing right now is currently working with the Florida Department of Transportation, um, specifically in Columbia County to assess the transportation needs of Columbia County residents. I know you and I spoke about this.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so the reason I'm here tonight is because I would like everyone in this room, if, if they would like to come, including, um, the councilman and, and clerk, um, to our community engagement session. That's going to be next Thursday, October twenty-sixth. That's going to be at six thirty PM and it's going to be in the community center here in Fort White. And, and really what we're trying to do, um, with our series of community engagement sessions is, is, is hear from Columbia County residents about your needs on your roads, specifically your state roads, but we're also open to listening to your transportation needs in general, whether that's on county roads or local roads. The more people we can get, um, the more information we can get to the Florida Department of Transportation. And what Columbia County residents get out of this, if you show up to the meetings and you give your input about your needs in Columbia County, is you're going to get a ranked prioritization list that we're sending to the Florida Department of Transportation. You know, I've done some surveying out here in Fort White. From what I've heard from some of the residents is that, you know, this intersection of twenty-seven and forty-seven tends to be a bit of an issue. These are the kinds of things that we want to hear. So if you care, um, you know, even a little bit about your state roads, your county roads, um, we hope that you can attend next Thursday, um, evening's community engagement session. So I appreciate that.
It's next Thursday, you said?
Yes, yes, sir. It's next Thursday. Uh, it's at the community center here in Fort White.
What's the date?
Uh, it's October twenty-sixth. I have a bunch of flyers. I can, I can leave them up here. Uh, you don't have to RSVP for the meeting, but you can. And we'll have food.
Okay, good deal. Lying, lying. All you had to say was food around here and everybody show up.
Yeah, and, um, I just want to highlight that this is not our last meeting. We also have a Zoom, um, meeting for anyone who's inclined to stay home in their PJs or if you cannot attend. It's going to be the same day. It's going to be at five thirty, though. And then November eighth, we're going to have as many residents as possible come out and help us prioritize, um, the, the projects that we have because I'm from Tallahassee and I can't tell you what's important in your community. Only you can tell me what's important in your community. So I'll leave these here and, um, you know, I, I look forward to working with you and, and hopefully we can get as many people to come out as possible.
About a month ago, I went to one of these meetings up in Lake City and it's very informative and, um, it allows us to make them, make our issues known because lots of times DOT looks at the whole area as a whole and gets prioritized and little old Fort White gets left out a lot of times. So this is an opportunity for us to really bring up the, some of the traffic issues that we have here in Fort White. So I would encourage everybody to please attend.
Thank you so much.
Sheriff fires, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. Hey, uh, Eliza, Eliza, golly, we got a question.
That date is in conflict with the council, the county council meeting at six. Is there any way you could?
What date is that?
It's the Thursday.
Well, it's on the twenty-fourth.
Well, this is, the, the Columbia County has their own, uh, have their own meeting up there for Columbia, for their area.
I understand, but for those of us that attend the county commission meeting at six o'clock in Lake City before the damn vote.
She said you could join by Zoom at five o'clock. Five thirty, you can join by Zoom. And, and if it's, if it's an issue, you know, we're happy to, if it's talk with you, it'd be one-on-one with you. We have, I'm sorry, I know I've overpassed my time. But we also have a survey that's available too, if you can't attend, to make your, your, uh, your issues known.
Does any through the, the deal here, transportation, does any through that bike way or travel where people walk, I walk, and those people ride bikes up and down because there's certain places in there, it's just only just crumbly pieces.
Yes, it does.
On what, bike tracks?
Yeah.
Really?
That bike track, transportation, for bad, go to Swarney County, cross it, something like that.
All right, let's move along, guys. All right. Thank you, Eliza. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. All right, number two, public meeting. Um, this is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh three amending the land development code section six oh three oh two, parking schedules.
An ordinance of the town of Fort White, Florida amending the land development code for, of the town of Fort White, Florida, amending section six point oh three point oh two entitled number of parking spaces required to specifically amend the parking schedule, providing for severalability, providing for complex and providing for ineffective gates. In your packet, I, there were some questions last time about, um, parking studies that were done by the, uh, general people and that was included in the packet here. that were done by the Dollar General people, and that was included in the packet here to justify lowering it from the eighty to the forty.
You wanna hash up the number of parking spaces again?
Good luck.
You wanna hash up the number of parking spots again?
We've already done it.
Is anybody from Dollar General here?
No.
No, they were not attending tonight.
Okay. I mean, we did, Bill did say within their, counting the law, is the old one is fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five down there, at the old one. The thing is, like I told him, the thing is, is that you would think that they would want more parking spaces for more customers, I mean, you would think, I mean, I, I, listen, if they'd done their studies, I, I like.
I'm just, I'm telling you, I know what's gonna happen to them parking spots, and when they do, there's gonna be trucks on the, them grasses, four-wheelers up and down the road. I might be, I might be one of them.
I know. Anybody, uh, do you have any issues? I mean, we, we approved it in the last one.
Yeah.
We decided to do it, so, I mean, you go okay with it? Um, how, how do we, I don't, man, we've been a long time since we did a public meeting. Just gotta just open it up for the public to speak. All right, at this time, I'm gonna open it up for the public to speak on behalf of the ordinance twenty point three, it's about the parking lot spaces for Dollar General. Uh, we approved the first, is this the second reading or first reading?
Second.
Second reading, okay, yeah. We approved the first reading, so. We approved the first reading, um, which limited, cause we were calling for eighty spots, but they limited down to forty. They said their studies showed that all of the Dollar Generals they're opening up now are going to the forty spots, uh, parking, so, we approved the last one, we, we did the first reading, we approved it, so, anybody wanna speak for the public on behalf of it? Okay, I'll close public participation. Board, anyone have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty-two zero-two-three dash oh-three. Uh, code section six dot oh-three dot oh-two dot one parking schedule.
Good. Second. Good, all in favor of, uh, second reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh-three, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right, good deal. All right, uh, we have another public meeting, a first reading ordinance twenty, we adopt smoke-free policy for town of Fort White parks, and this is first reading.
Yes. An ordinance number two oh-two-three dash oh-four, an ordinance of the town council of Fort White, Florida, prohibiting smoking and vaping in public parks within the town limits of Fort White, Florida, providing for severalability and providing an effective date. This was, uh, request was made of us by the, um, Smoke-Free Florida Coalition, and I believe they're here, would like to speak to that for a brief moment.
Yeah, please.
If you'd like.
Um, thank you, um, I'm Brooke Frye, I'm with Tobacco Free Columbia, um, and I'm going to, I have my students working against tobacco member that's gonna speak to you guys just for a minute, um, about his support and his thoughts on it.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
Good evening, I am Jacob Kusick, and I'm here to represent the students working against tobacco, or the SWAT club, and Boy Scouts Troop Eighty-Five. I want to talk to you about making our county parks safe and a healthy place for kids like me to play. Right now, more than half of kids in Columbia County say they've been around secondhand smoke from tobacco and vaping. That's not good for any of us. Cigarettes and vapes have things like lead and formaldehyde that can be a threat to our health. Also, it's not just about us. Cigarettes are the most littered item in the country, and that's hurting our environment. Filters and vape products don't break down, so they're causing pollution problems. You, as town council members, have the power to keep us safe from these harmful products in our parks. We're asking you to make a rule, like the regulation of Smoking by County and the Municipalities Act, to stop smoking and vaping in our county parks and community centers. This rule will help us breathe better and keep our parks cleaner. The Columbia County Board of County Commissioners and the Lake City Council have already adopted a tobacco-free park ordinance, and we are hopeful that you will also jump on board. And we've got an idea to make sure it's fair for everyone. Instead of just relying on law enforcement, you can use science to remind people about the rule. That way, everyone will know what's expected. I really care about our community, and I want to make sure we can all enjoy our parks without worrying about secondhand smoke. It'll be awesome knowing we're all working together to make our environment better. Thanks so much for listening and considering this idea to make our parks tobacco-free.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Hold on, hold on, a quick.
Yes, absolutely.
Why are cigars excluded from this?
Um, that's a really good question, um, I do not have an answer to that. That was part of, um, the original ordinance, that's the only way it would go through the state legislature. I wish I had an answer, um, I know, because this.
And non-filters.
Non-filtered cigars.
Yes. That is excluded, of course, under statute, yeah, unfortunately. Um, that, we are trying to, yeah, we're trying to get that back, um, we are working on it, unfortunately.
There's gotta be a reason.
I mean, the only thing.
Love us.
Personal opinion.
It's the love us.
You know, um, so this went through for parks and beaches, so I'm, I'm thinking there's, um, you know, cigar bars on beaches.
Right.
Um, you know, that probably were opposed.
Yes, true, I thought about that, it's, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a business.
Yeah, that's just my personal opinion on that, yeah. I know it's silly to me. I hope, yeah, it's silly, because there's unfortunately still chemicals and.
Right.
Um, things that people, high amounts of nicotine, so, yeah.
Thank you for your time, so, yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, so.
Pretty much so for the signs, it won't be to be in four or five, but.
Yeah.
That, that's what we're, um, asking for, is really just, um.
Signs.
Pretty much so for the signs, there, nobody gonna be up there.
To not, yeah.
Tickets.
Correct.
For.
It's really just, we're hoping the signs are of the main tariff form, so, it's respected.
So, we're, we're paying for those?
Um, actually, I can pay for this out of my funding, so.
Really?
It's not something that you guys would have to pay, I would be more than happy to pay for.
Okay, good deal.
Awesome.
All right.
Um, if you do enforce this, is there a drinking ordinance in the park? Do you know?
Secondhand drinking is not a problem yet.
Yeah, it ain't becoming an issue yet, but it does. So, yes, we'll, we'll, yeah, so, um. Yeah, yeah, I see.
But I, I would be interested, um.
Yeah, okay.
Providing, providing, the second reading, providing.
Nothing new.
Should be at the November twentieth, maybe? Perfect, okay, we can provide.
All right, so, guys, we have, um.
Nice job.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two zero-two-three zero-zero-four, adopting the smoke-free policy for the town of Fort White parks.
Second.
I'll second that.
All right, second, so, all in favor of proving, uh, proven, uh, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero-zero-four, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
All right, good deal.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, uh.
Number three's off the table.
Number four is off the table.
Yep.
Um, the next one, number five, is approval of an amendment to an engineering agreement with North Florida Professional Services in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirteen cents for the construction of sidewalks under a CBG grant awarded to the town of Fort White. This, uh, these engineering costs are considerably less because the project had to be scaled, we scaled the project back because sidewalks were already gonna be provided along Sky and Jordan Street under the, um, LAP funding program with DOT. So this is reducing the engineering costs for the sidewalks that were already approved under the CBG grant for the middle school in the, I mean, the elementary school and the high school, to connect the high school to the, um, field that's, uh, in the back. So try to keep kids out of it.
That's the one, we're running by the football field that we talked about. That was the one we had to get permission from, who, okay, got you.
Yes, yes, this is just adjusting the engineering costs downward according to, for the change in the, um, project.
So this is not asking for, for fifty, it's, it's saying that, okay, I got you.
We're gonna pay out our grant money.
I got you.
It's paid out of the grant, that is correct.
So I have a motion to approve or amend.
Make a motion to approve the amendment to the engineering agreement, amount of fifty-seven thousand for the construction of sidewalks. Under CBG.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of the amendment to engineering agreement for North Florida Professional Services in the amount of fifty-seven, three oh-six thirteen for the construction of sidewalks under CBG's grants, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
All right.
I think we need your backup in address number four. I know there was a statement made that he was pulling the, the, uh, subdivision off of, et cetera, et cetera. But we still need to follow up with the recommendation made in the planning council. Um, I've got it, he's still here, he's still here, he may change his mind tomorrow, or, we, we don't, so, we need to, for, for continuity purposes, we need to go into address number four, address the recommendation made about the planning board, which will be to table it till our next meeting, and then before deciding this is truly what he's going to do, if it was something in writing, et cetera, then we can deal with it.
So number four would be tabled pending the planning and zoning meeting next.
Make a motion to, uh, table the preliminary plat of wind farm subdivision, uh, till our next meeting, at which time for a full site of drawing. That's legible with the change, with the changes.
Correct.
With appropriate changes.
That's second, good. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
All right, good deal.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lindsay.
Now, the last item is a temporary use permit, this was submitted by the owners of the collective. Um, it says that the Fort White High School guidance counselor has asked the collective to stay open until one A.M. on October the twenty-first, so students after the homecoming dance, um, can be provided a safe space to congregate. Um, so, this, this is on October, the homecoming game is the twentieth, and the homecoming dance is the twenty-first, so, the guidance counselor is asking, uh, the collective, and so, we have a ten P.M. con limit usually, so they're asking permission to be able to stay open until one P.M.
It's gonna include music?
Saturday night, about the Saturday night?
Saturday night, yes.
You guys gonna be playing music, is that late?
Um, we're not sure what we're gonna provide for the students yet. Um, we're hoping to talk more with the guidance counselor and a couple other parents that reached out to us and see what they, uh, are hoping us.
The loud, the loud music, there is, there's, you know, obviously residents around you, you're gonna be affected by music that late.
Yeah, the way we see it, uh, maybe, you know, hopefully we get allowed to do this, this is a once-a-year thing. Um, we think it could be, you know, benefit for the students to have a place to congregate afterwards, so we're safe.
I'm, I have, I have no doubt, I know.
Yeah, but the dance is Saturday night.
Sorry?
They was saying like to the dance, the homecoming dance, he was asking, he said it was Friday night, but the game is Friday night, but the dance is Saturday night.
Yes.
Are you gonna have any sheriff deputies there?
Uh, we could have some, we could have a lot.
Yeah, I think that would probably be a good idea for everyone, you know, y'all included.
You have parents that are volunteering to be chaperones as well.
Okay, perfect.
It's almost kind of like an extension of the school event.
One A.M. is pretty late for high school, isn't it?
Uh, right.
I know, I had to be home at eleven, sorry.
I like that dude as a girl. Um, I mean.
I can't see that the music, the music could become an issue, so, um, I don't know if you wanna place the limitation on the time cutoff for, for the music, because there are people within a hundred, uh, feet of the collective that who have lived there. So, one o'clock is kinda late for music, so, we just, I wanna bring that up.
She's got a Mr. Jackson.
Could you get them to, uh, possibly not park on the street as well? I, I brought up one time in this meeting, I came through one night, and nobody's expecting them cars to be there, and the cars were clear, so, that could put, that could be a problem, too.
Yeah, I'm sure they'd be violent parking on the side and around back.
Somebody's gonna get hurt right here.
Exactly, I, I came through that night, and you don't expect.
I keep saying that, some little kids will run out by one of them cars and get hurt really bad.
Yeah, they got chaperones, and I, I would, it says on the deputy here, somebody, tank, maintain control, um, if not, that it would get out of control, but, kids are kids.
You could.
Yeah, being a bunch of kids.
Say you're something, man?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm here looking right next door, if you wanna be up till one o'clock for more of the music.
Yeah.
I mean.
I wouldn't.
That's right. So you can either deny it, or you can prove with conditions, or?
What time do we shut music down now?
Ten.
Ten o'clock?
The question, why wasn't the community center mentioned as a possible alternative for this event?
Cause the collective, they like hanging out at the collective.
Well, I know, I know that question, there's more parking, you could add more vendors or food vendors there temporarily. Schools right there, they can walk.
You have to ask the school guidance counselor that question, because she's the one that contacted the white, who'd ask.
Who's the, who's the school guidance, guidance?
Um, I don't have any suit code right now to go through my messages, but I.
The Sherry.
Sherry Kennedy, Burnett Kennedy.
Kennedy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So you're gonna have one of them? Probably.
And we don't have to have music till one A.M. if you don't, I mean, we hadn't even discussed yet if we were even gonna have music, um.
When is this, I'm sorry?
It's sixteen.
I don't have to turn off the song.
It's this Saturday night, so, I mean, you know, you need it, I guess, to play.
Well, usually our music is on Saturdays, um, so if you guys did approve it, we would have just extended it if the students showed up after the dance.
How are y'all neighbors over by the store, that house is the closest to y'all?
I'm sorry?
The neighbors that's closest to y'all are out there by the store. How are they?
They're fine. Oh, we, we.
No, I know.
We've been about to complain personally, we've, uh, we have open communication with all the neighbors there.
I was just wondering that one that's super, is super close.
She's even offering to, for us to use her parking sometimes, probably.
Oh, yeah, sounds good, yeah. I'm pulling, yeah, that's on the house over there, but.
I mean, it's one night, you know what I'm saying, it's.
Yeah, I would ask, if somebody does complain, if somebody complains, they're gonna call the sheriff, the sheriffs will show up, and then they're gonna say, well, I have permission to do it. I would ask that, you know, if that event does take place, that you guys be respectful to whoever you might be keeping up, and, and turn it down, I mean, at least, you know what I mean? Just, just, you guys are very respectful people, I'm not saying that.
Scott, we're still getting complaints on the music stuff, still?
Yes.
Yes.
And you live on your little, 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 little house across my house.
How's that working out?
I, I would say, I mean, the biggest thing is, on my part is, you know, make sure there's a sheriff deputy on site until everyone leaves, um, and then, I, I'd say music be shut down, and we can give them till eleven. I mean, what type of problem get out, or the dance?
Dance, dance.
All right.
Ten?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Wow.
Now, since the public, I mean, there was just kids, um, ten to one.
I don't think we would have any customers past ten, we tend to, everybody already knows that's our cutoff time. Um, the only people present, I think, were the students and maybe their parents.
Right.
We wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't market this as an event for.
Sure.
You know, extend the party or something.
Can we say the music low level?
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, maybe very low.
Sheriff deputy.
Sheriff deputy, deputy low level, I mean.
Uh, decibels of the noise, so if, if you guys feel comfortable with a specific number or range.
I don't, I'm just saying, I love where you're not disturbing.
You don't wake me up. You know, cause.
It'd be mindful.
Please, next year, we'll count it.
Yeah.
Basically, so, I mean, I think it's a good thing.
You will have a drink, correct?
Yeah, we could look into that.
No, you don't have to.
Who would I raise?
This is hard.
Sure, I'll go ahead and get it.
You can give him a number, Ms. Connie, please, we got that number. All right, so, shall we all make a motion?
How many hours are you gonna have, do you know? How many chaperones are you gonna have, do you know?
That's, that was brought up by the guidance counselor and a couple of parents. I'd like to go ahead and ask them about that.
Yeah, let Ms. Connie know if you would.
I'm not as worried about chaperones because there's a cop there, I mean, he'll keep everybody.